All right, I'll start the meeting. Do you have to add one thing to the agenda? The reappraisal order? Anything else that needed to be added to the agenda? Oh, I totally skipped executive session. We do have one executive session. Does anybody have anything else to add?
And that is for what?
I know, is that legal, personnel or contracts?
This one is for litigation or prosecution.
Oh, right, it is.
It's legal.
Yep. Thanks. Okay.
Motion to accept agenda as amended.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, anything on the minutes of June 5th? Select Board and Liquor Board? Wait, I think I did see something.
Recording in progress.
What is going on with that thing?
You saw it when I.
I know. Something's up with that wifi.
Yeah, you see.
That's been spotty all day.
I guess I don't. Did anybody have anything? No?
There's none.
Nope.
Town manager's report.
Okay. So I met with the Rowland County Forester, Tessa McGann, to discuss a pine pitch growth, the area that's behind the town office here. It's actually on district, school district land, but they have, I guess 20 or so years ago, they did like a cleanup out there so that the pitch pines could grow. Like they're, I guess it's kind of rare that we have this here. So we walked out and looked at it. So they're gonna look at, you know, they're gonna talk to the school district, see what's going on and see if they can clean it up again and maybe do a little controlled burn out there to get rid of the underbrush and stuff, so.
Oh, okay.
Actually, Chief Campbell was here when she was here, so we talked to him a little bit about it. But it was kinda neat, and they're massive trees that are out there. It's pretty cool. Submitted a grant preapproval application Vermont Emergency Management for replacement of the culvert at Oxbow and Ager's. I tried to apply for this for the Class II grant last year, and they have this program. So it's a new grant program, and one of the things it focuses on is upsizing structures that could potentially cause flood issues, and that's one of them. It's undersized, it's old, the earth is actually kinda growing into it, so we'll see where that goes, and it'd be nice to get that one replaced. Sean and I met with John Casella a couple weeks ago. We got a phone call from Butch that Casellas wanted to see what they could do about getting municipal water out there. So we spoke with them, and actually, there's some more that's happened since I wrote this. They're moving their entire construction business to Pittsburgh, and they're looking at anticipating 100 employees there, so that's great for us.
Yeah.
So Sean and I met with John just briefly, and then we went up with Robert from Otter Creek to just really get more of like the.
Water and sewer or water?
Just water. Sewer's a little bit more, because sewer stops at the bridge. So, but, you know, they've gotta have, you know, like they've got fire suppression up there and like other things. So we went, just to see what we could do, Rob wanted to run numbers to see if we needed to put a booster pump in or not, just because of the distance, and we wanna make sure that we have enough, you know, fire. So we're gonna get some numbers on that. The water line stops at, I guess it's called the Roe Apartments.
Yeah.
So it's not that far, and John said, you know, he'd be willing to dig the trench for us, so that would, you know, be huge. But then we're looking at, well, let's see what, you know, costs and bring it up the hill a little more, you know, because we have some people there, like Sagamon, that have wanted water for a while with rentals, so. More to come with that, but, you know, it'd be great if we can get water up there for Casellas, because that's a, that's a big deal for us, I think, having 100 jobs in Pittsburgh.
And if we're gonna do a pump, we wanna make sure we got one that can go all the way up.
Yep. Yep. So, I mean, we even talked about maybe seeing what it would take to get it to the town line, because it's really not that far either after that. So if we're at least preparing for that to happen, and we have the right stuff in place where it needs to be, that would.
There's nothing down the town line.
Yes.
So while we're doing that.
Yeah.
How much more would it cost to drop a sewer pipe in there too, so if we ever do wanna extend it, it's already there?
So sewer has to have certain separation from water too, so, and we've got some wet land there, and we could look at that.
I'm just thinking.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Doing that, I mean, we should've put sewer in when we buried that other line, and it wasn't done.
Yep, I agree.
It's stupid, you got it all dug, put it in, even if you can't connect it today.
If it's there.
Two or three years from now, it doesn't cost.
Well, that's why I got, you know, V-Trans agreed to put the hangers and the sleeves on the bridge, so if we wanna, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Go further, which that's, that's a big win for us, because that's, that would be expensive. We can look at that, Dave. You know, I'm, yeah, I guess if it was in the ground, and, you know, we could see what we're doing, but I'm still trying to find scoping money to get it up to Kendall Hill.
Yeah.
So, which we're gonna, we talked with our engineer about that too, to see if we could just get a quote to just pay for it in-house, and it might save us some money doing it that way too, instead of trying to go find some funding, because, you know, everything's focusing more on infill and not expansion, and it's, it's been difficult to find money for that, so. But I thought you guys would like to hear that, and, you know, more to come on that, and we'd love to see Casellas in town.
Yeah.
And I think your idea of bringing it up to Kendall Hill is excellent, and I think that's something we need for the town to be able to.
Well, it just makes sense, you know, where our areas of growth are, like, you know, someone had mentioned to me, you know, what's going on with economic development? I'm like, where do we do it? You know, no one wants to come to a town and put septic in, you know, and like, there's no room in the village, so, you know, the only way for us to grow is north and south, and I think our town plan is even set up for that.
It is.
So, you know, that's, and I, we do have one owner, landowner owns a large tract of land that I've spoken to more than once about development, so, yeah, it'd be nice. Because I wanna do like, when three, segment three happens, is to get the sewer line in there during that, because we're gonna, they're gonna be digging it up, it's the perfect time to do it.
Well, what have we got for septic capacity? What does that mean?
For sewer?
For sewer? Sewer.
We have capacity right now, you know, at some point, and if we put.
If they extend to those undeveloped pieces of land down there, I don't think the plant that we have is gonna handle it.
We've got, we have capac, it's like anything else, until it rains, you know, and that's everything in Vermont, but we do have capacity to take on some growth. You know, we, I, they have, I'm sure they have a study that's been done on it.
Wasn't it 20-ish percent, something like that?
It was a pretty good number last night.
It was a fair number, the last I knew.
We need users.
I think everything they've done there has brought that back to.
It's a lot more efficient than it was.
When I went down through with Sean, he had it, right?
Yeah, they run, they run good works down there, so, yeah, you know, it's just money and time, I guess, but, you know, haven't given up on it, so, but anyway. Ann's gonna be sending out water and sewer bills next week. I know she's planning on going through delinquencies and stuff on Friday. We did hold a mandatory pre-bid meeting for Whipple, the Whipple Hollow Road culvert replacement. This was the one that was funded by the Better Roads Grant that we received a couple months ago. So we had five, we had five bidders show up on Monday, and the bids will be open on July 1st here, so, that's just a, it's a, it's a squash culvert, so it's an oblong-shaped culvert that has baffles in it, and it's just above Liz's farm, like between UJ's, so. Yeah, so, yeah, so hopefully we get a good price on that, and that's done. We had the first local concerns meeting for the Tri-Town Trail, and this is some of the stuff that was presented to the big audience we had here, we had one person attend. There is a link that's been posted to provide resident input on the project, so there'll be two more local concerns meetings too, so. It was a really nice night out that night, so I can see why people didn't wanna come. There will be a scheduled water shut-off starting next Monday that'll affect residents south of Bridge 108, because they're gonna be moving the line, water line over, so we've sent letters out to the folks that are gonna be affected, there'll be a boil water notice until we get a clean test back, so. And then I'm giving you the little Bridge 108 update they send us every week, and Liz has rec stuff on here, I don't know if you need me to go through it. We did, we had someone, Alicia had called me today, someone was wondering if we could open the pond at rec for, like, free for folks to cool down for the next couple days, so we decided to make that happen, I mean, you know, if it cools them down.
Excuse me.
And just a couple other things. We did open the library as a cooling center here, and I guess just the rec.
School? No, the school's, well, the school, right?
Schools for, like, that's a shelter. That's a sort of, that's a red cross shelter. So, but the library's got, you know, and then we said we could open up here in case folks need to get out of the heat, because it's gonna be worse tomorrow, so, and it has been posted on some social media, so.
Yeah, I did, I put on Facebook that about the.
We got a little messed up, messed up today, because we didn't realize that most places were closed today because of Juneteenth, so.
Yeah, that was.
We had to make a quick correction of that.
Library was not available.
But anyway, you know, if folks are, you know, anyone that needs to get out of the sun or whatever, you know, we've got enough places to go to.
Has the rec director been brought into that loop, in case they need extra lifeguards?
Yes, we talked about it this morning, so, and she ran it past the lifeguards, and, yeah, it's fine, all is good there.
Yeah.
Yep. What else did I have? You said, what did I?
Which is good, I just, there was just an article in one of the papers today about how hard it is to find lifeguards. Where did I say that?
Tried to find anybody for anything lately. I think that's all I have. Oh, just a couple of things that are in your package, just to take notice. Open meeting law has had a couple of changes through this session. This is the one that came from the league, and just a few things with posting, we do have to have our, our video meetings available, so I think Ann was gonna reach out to you guys and see if we can do, post links or whatever to it. We talked about maybe doing a YouTube page, but if we can just use a link to peg, that would make life so much easier.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. So just a couple things, and I, I don't know if anyone signed up for that Open Meeting Law seminar that Rowland Regional Planning's doing next week.
Twenty-seventh?
You're signed up.
Yeah. Well, if you signed me up, because.
Yep. So I think probably moving forward is, just a suggestion, is we should probably start doing maybe some workshops or something during a select board meeting, just quick, because of all the changes, to make sure that we're all compliant, because it's gonna be a requirement, you know, that someone's trained, I think like the select board chair and the town manager or two that have to, like, attend annual things now, so, but I'd rather see us in compliance than getting in trouble, so.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Plus, it's good to be, you know.
Yep. So the couple of, one other thing in here is there is a QR code for the Tri-Town Trail thing that folks can, and Ann posted these today, they're on our website, so if folks wanna take the survey for it, they can, they can do it that way. And I think that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Dave?
So as far as the trail goes, they have no idea quarter they're thinking of?
Well, we, you know, we've had a couple meetings on it, on just throwing ideas around with like, you know, the Crown, where the Crown Point Trail goes through a lot of Proctor and Pittsburgh, and, you know, there's like, what's the trail that comes from West Rowland that goes like, comes over on the Proctor Ridge? I can't think of what it's called now. So just throwing some ideas of like old rail trail, seeing if Omia is, is interested in opening some of, because there's so much land there, you know, and trails, and I spoke with Bill Powers about historic stuff, and there's actually an old like homestead area on the other side of Gorham Bridge, up on that, that might be a good, you know, try to throw some history in it to see if that helps out, and just try to get to like the casual trails, which would probably be the easiest, and there'll probably be some roads, you know, whatever, just make a network of connections, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, it's, it's kinda interesting, I mean, this was something that was brought up before I got here, but it'd be kinda neat, I think it'd be a good little economy booster as well, so, and that, maybe we could have, end up Kamutas, and they could eat lunch, and we take their money and send them back, but.
Well, Brian would wanna do that.
I think we should set a toll bridge up, right?
Every property owner should have a toll.
Yeah, yeah. We could all get an EZ pass.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, it's just, again, it's just, it's in the scoping phase, so, you know, and I think that, you know, I was hoping there'd be more people at the local concerns meeting, but it seems like most people I've talked to around town about, like, comes up and they're supportive of it, one, I think, because we have such a great trail network already in town.
Yeah, absolutely.
They understand the value of it, so.
Well, and I think too, the way it was, I mean, the way it was worded, I mean, if you don't have a concern, if you're just interested in it, you're waiting to hear what the end result is, right? I don't know.
Well, at all three towns, there wasn't high attendance, because like I said, it was a beautiful night out, and so.
Yeah.
West Rowland, Proctor and Pittsburgh, am I right?
Yep, yep.
What is there for abandoned railroad?
There's some stuff like.
Little piece in Proctor.
Yep, yep. There are quite a few trails, like, I know from when I had the store and used to bike a lot, like, on, between Beaver Pond Road and where Gorham Bridge is, that whole area, so, you know, it'll be interesting to see, I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot that's gonna have to happen with easements and, you know, agreements and everything else, so.
Right.
But, you know, I mean, it's.
Goes up to the Hard Farm, doesn't it, and comes out by Omia?
Yes.
Right?
That old.
The snowmobile trail.
Yeah. Well, it used to go to, I don't know, since they put Hogback in, there used to be a spur that went to Hollister. Used to start at Hollister, go, and you could go right down through. There was some recent map where I saw it on there. So I don't know, I haven't paid attention where.
That's right.
Hogback, how that affected it.
Yep.
Well, we used to, used to be a snowmobile trail, you could come through pathways, cross Hollister Road by the quarries, and then you hit that rail bed and flew right up through.
Yep.
So, Omia.
Yep. So, you know, it'd be cool to kinda add like the historic stuff, like I said, with like the old homestead area and like the Crown Point stuff, because, and I know when I had the store, people would come all the time and look for those monuments and follow them, and so we had one right out in front there, so, and we have quite a few of them in town, I think, too.
We do.
And then we just moved one, right? And.
Yes, to right into Liz's and Josh's farm.
Yeah, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Okay, any select board remarks?
Yep, I have a complaint from someone coming off Oxbow Road.
Yep, you can't see.
You can't, because of the angle of the bridge. I haven't tried it, but he claims it blanks it right out, so you can't see cars coming at all.
How old was that complaint?
Assuming it's the same complaint.
About three days ago.
Okay, so, there's a reason why I'm asking that, because we got one Friday, someone came to see Chief and I, and then there were a few after that, and it's been dead quiet since. So like the one person I talked to, I said, can you, like, just give it some time and maybe get used to it and see. So Sean and I were actually down there doing something yesterday, right at the intersection, and, you know, the, the bridge is over farther, and I have mentioned this to like the, you know, ever, like, so the, the distance between Oxbow and the bridge is, is a farther distance. You can see through the bridge rails. I, I would ask that we just give it a little time, because I think it's something new. We haven't really received a lot of complaints about it, so, but that was the one, and I think, you know, it's all been redesigned there, so, and it's temporary.
Yeah, no, and I explained, it's really not a lot we can do, but they wanted it to be a matter of public record, so it is now.
There's nothing, like, there's nothing in the way, like, where the old bridge is, you know, and there's Oxbow, because there's quite a, you know, some space between that and the temp. They don't have any high stuff in there or anything now, so, you know, I think if they keep that area clear, because you can see through the rails, and I, when I was down there, I was watching for like cars, you know, like my height cars, you can see the roofs coming, so I think if, you know.
And I think the biggest complaint was it, it was basically bad enough going left, going south on seven, but the worst one is trying to cut across to get on Route 3, because you're exposed, and they're coming out, that whole thing, because you're coming off the bridge, and I noticed, if, the first time I went over, it's like, okay, where does the road go?
It just, yeah.
Because it kinda disappears once you know where it goes, but, so I, I think it is a matter of getting used to it.
So one thing, like, I just, thing I noticed when I did this before, like, we always have a hard time figuring out as the locals, because we know how it's supposed to be, and out-of-towners just drive through it, you know, so we're the ones that are gonna complain about it, because it is something different.
Oh, yeah.
The thing with going onto three though, you actually have to turn onto seven and then turn onto three now, so I think that's something that, you know, it is temporary right now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it, it has quieted down since three or four days ago, so.
Yeah.
But, you know, but if more people call, please let me know, because I will, I'll call the Public Information Officer and talk to them, so.
I got two on Saturday, complaints.
Yeah.
And I really think we gotta be careful there, those, I watched a tractor trailer just the other day come down there, and he was about 50 when he hit the mobile.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
And our police officer had someone pulled up off above. That guy had all he could do to slow down to make that corner, and there was another car, it was just a matter of time before someone hits that in the bottom.
Well, it's, I mean.
These guys were going, this guy going Omia, I followed him.
Yep.
And he had no idea where he was, and he wasn't from here.
Stephon wrote nine tickets down there yesterday, and I mean, our ticket writing is insane lately, like, it's really, and it's mostly Route 7, you know, like, I mean, if we had two officers on full-time, we'd be writing twice that many, because, you know, wherever they are, people are speeding somewhere else, but even when I was on Whipple Hollow for that culvert, pre-bid, Chad and I were leaving, and there comes a truck up Whipple Hollow, and I'm like, well, look at that, you know, like, you'd think by now they'd know, but.
They don't.
So.
You think how many million trucks are on the road, how many of them come here twice?
Yep, exactly, yep, right, exactly, so.
Just remember that truck that ended up in the cornfield, because its GPS said to turn.
Me and the one that tried to go down by Eddie Keyes and ended up out in there? Oh, yeah, that was.
Because his GPS told him.
Oh, yeah.
So, but, just call me or email me if you have more of these, because, you know, if we, they turns into a lot, you know, they need to know.
Yeah, oh, for sure.
And I can certainly, you know, we, we talk to them almost every day, so.
Yeah, I can tell you, coming off Oxbow, to go south on Route 3 is a little testy.
Yeah, that's what the Skype said was the worst.
It's, you know, it's an interesting area, I keep calling it like the, the extended Essex 5 corners, because the roads all come in the same way like that, and, you know, like, the only way to make it safer is get rid of a road, which we can't do, but there's just so many roads merging at one spot there.
Probably leaving the slip lane would've done everything we need for safety, but we're not, it's not happening.
It's not happening.
It'd be 100%.
Time will tell.
Everybody's in agreement on that.
Time will tell.
Oh, it'll, it'll be read.
Yeah, I know, let's, so I don't know how to do it, but the email updates that we get about, from V-Trans about the bridge project would be good to have on Facebook. I just don't know how to do it, like, I get it through email, but I don't know how to take it from my email and put it on the Facebook.
Okay. Yeah, just copy and paste it.
That's even above, listen, this is why I shouldn't be doing the Facebook page.
Highlight it, hit copy.
Right-click.
Then, yep.
I'll have somebody show me to do it, because I think it'll be important, and it might like alleviate some of the questions, you know, and concerns that we get.
I'm pasting them.
So speaking of that account too, that, the Pittsburgh one, like, because we don't control that page, it was something that someone else does.
Oh, the Pittsburgh Community Facebook page, yeah.
So, actually, Liz's way has been great, we've been, we've been working to get the control back for it, so that we can.
Are you talking about the town Facebook page? That's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Our town of Pittsburgh one?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you meant there's also the Pittsburgh community one.
So we're trying to get that control back.
I see what you're saying, gotcha. Because that would be good, because I shouldn't be the only admin on there.
There should be someone in this office anyway, really, you know, because then we could throw everything out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, because I don't know what I'm doing with computers.
And I think I made a motion, I don't know if it was last summer or the summer before, that grass and stuff across from the library in the corner.
Yep.
That is way high, you can't see people, you can't see kids. I thought I made a motion to have that cut just like grass, I'm pretty sure I did.
I think you did do something.
We did cut it a couple times last year, they've, they've been.
I, I made a motion to, to be done, that hadn't been done yet.
At the old town office? Yeah.
Oh, it's, it was, it was done last year, Tom. We did it a few.
Last year, but it's supposed to be maintained continuously.
Yeah, well, I will let them know if they're outside.
Also, if you, if you walk, it does, you have to turn sideways, actually, right now to walk through there, because there's so much overgrowth.
I had two, three complaints on it last week, and I thought, I'll bring it up.
So, I know, I forgot, I had, somebody had mentioned that to me, too.
I know there's flowers there, and there's all kinds of stuff.
So I did also hear, and this, I don't know, I haven't like verified this, that it changed hands, so maybe it's gonna get cleaned up?
I don't know.
I'll just have Chad go more, it's fine, we've been.
They need to clean it up, though, because there's all kinds of crap in there.
Yeah, there's like a chair, um.
Way out of control.
Yeah, there's a bunch of stuff in there, not just plants.
No. So when you guys get calls like this between meetings, can you just call me or email me or stop by or drop me a note?
I usually do, that one, I forgot.
The other one I got today was, and I think, I think they might've done it, was at the end of Plains Road, that grass there by.
I had Sean do it.
Did he do that?
Yeah, yeah.
He couldn't see there.
No, it was getting, it grew quick, yeah.
It grew quick, and if you're in a low car.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When there's one coming up, they're not doing 35.
No.
They're, they're hitting 50 through there, so, whoa, so.
Over on this subject, Stevens Road at Route 3, if you're turning north or going straight across, you can't see to the south very well, because Route 3 goes around the corner, and there's vegetation on that lot.
So, is that a state, that'd be a state issue though.
That would be a state thing, but do we get in touch with them or?
Yep, I noticed they were mowing sometime this week, because seven was done in the last pair or two.
This, this is shrubs and stuff on their, on their land, and if somebody's coming north, going too far, too fast, then.
I know, I always like get nervous, I cross there a fair amount, and I always feel just, it's nerve-wracking, really.
Yeah, we get that grass under control.
Um, I know, now, so now that, I know, I left my notebook at home, the person who had talked to me about the vegetation across, at the house across from the library, also almost got hit crossing to Kamutas, and knows that we have the lights, and are we just still waiting on permits?
So, yes, on that one. So, yes, on that one, so I, we did get the approval to finish the rest of the sidewalk and put the speed, flashing speed limit signs up. That one, they didn't want to give us a permit until we did something on the Kamuta side, so there would be like a sidewalk there.
Oh, because wasn't it like a height issue?
So, I, Chad's gonna do something with that, we're just like, they're just waiting for us to do it. And this was just Friday that we received all this after a few phone calls, so, um, yes, that's, that hasn't been forgotten and we're gonna, because we're gonna put the rapid flashing things in.
Yeah, that would be super helpful at that spot.
V-Trans beefed up the signposts for that last year when they didn't.
So, we're all set to do that on the south side too, then? The flashing?
It'd be on both sides of the road.
Yeah, well, that, that one probably could go up anytime very soon then, if we're not waiting on that, we should get that done.
Oh, no, that's the one we're waiting for, we've just gotta do this, we've just gotta show them the plan for what we're gonna do for the sidewalk on the Kamuta side.
That's the Kamuta one, can't we do the other one?
He's saying that if we haven't one on either side of the road, why can't we start on the one?
Oh, no, 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 it's the permit for the set, that's, yeah, we can't, they work together anyway. We're on, we're almost there, Mark, it'll be done in a couple of weeks, I bet.
It's been a long time.
We've gotta, we've gotta.
I don't know.
We've gotta order the lights for those ones too, so.
I thought we had them.
I thought we had them.
We have the flashing speed limit signs.
Yeah, that's what he's talking about, isn't it?
No, he, you're talking about the crosswalk signs.
That's what I was talking about.
Speed limit sign, no, yeah, we just got that permit Friday for it.
That's what I was talking about.
Yeah, that's, you're talking about.
I just moved on to something.
Sorry, I, I thought you were talking about.
I was talking about.
It's a thirty-five mile an hour thing way up on top of the hill.
Something flashing, because I think these truck drivers aren't seeing anything.
So, these would be in the twenty-five mile an hour zone with flashing. The, the speed limit signs that we got would be in the twenty-five mile an hour zone.
That's not where we originally put that, that's not correct, it's the top of the hill when they're coming down, that's where it's supposed to be going.
I did not, I was not aware of that.
Top of the hill on the north end of town.
South of town.
South end of town, the top of the hill.
Top of the hill before the mobile.
So, they slow down before they start down the hill.
This must have been something discussed before me, because we, we talked to Village.
No.
No, it wasn't that long ago that we talked.
It was a while ago, we've been trying to do this for a while.
We started that with, uh, the other one.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
So, yeah.
So, that was supposed to be the top of the hill.
It's supposed to be the top of the hill.
Thirty-five.
It does no good to try to slow them halfway down that hill.
No, well, it would have been in the twenty-five zone.
Which is halfway through town, so that's, yeah, no.
Okay, our, our goal was to slow them down coming down that hill to make that intersection.
Especially winter time, you're gonna notice a big difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be at the thirty-five on both ends.
Yeah, that truck never would have been able to stop to turn that bridge, the one the other day.
So, I might have to redo it.
Piled right up on the bottom.
I'm gonna have to resubmit the permit.
Yeah, that's where it's going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-five wouldn't, wouldn't go that way down.
But as far as, um.
Girls.
Well, it would do good, because you got almost a mile and a half road going to the village that would slow traffic down, so.
Yeah, but our, our, one of our major goals on this speed limit thing was to slow down the intersection of three and seven.
Right.
Because of what the state was doing there to try to make it safer, and we didn't slow it down there. So, right now it is, it's twenty-five, but that'll go away. And that was, so, and having that flashing at the top of the hill was to slow them down before they pitched down that hill and couldn't slow down.
All right, I'll resubmit it.
Okay.
But back to the crosswalk, the blinking crosswalk sign, so, because, so I thought we also had already purchased those and we're just waiting to install those.
Purchased this flashing speed limit signs, not purchased the other lights.
All right, but, and we are waiting for a permit on that as well?
Yep.
I know, it's been a long time, I just went, it's, right, like, really long.
It's been a while, yep.
Okay. All right.
A lot of people on vacation.
It's just, there's a lot of, a lot of near-death experiences in that, that, uh, corner there, so. Um, anything else before we move on? Public comment? Nobody on Zoom, right? Um, all right, uh, we have one old business, uh, item, health order fines discussion.
So, the, the last meet, I want to go to the minute, so I'd say this wrong. There was discussion on whether or not we had.
Oh, the actual fines in the ordinance?
Well, we don't have an ordinance, so, um. We don't have one, look in the book, there's not one there.
No ordinance, there's no.
No health ordinance?
No, no, just have the local.
We need the biggest look.
Jeez, I'm, I know.
So, so that's where, where we're at, and, um, you know, we can draft something up, we, we'll look at other towns and see if anything else is out there and come up with some type of ordinance, but.
Well, yeah, let's do that ASAP.
I think it would almost, so, well, here's my suggestion. We already have the Health Officers Manual that the state gives to rich, and that has everything in it, it doesn't discuss fines, so I think if we just have a fine, a fine list, we don't need to do an ordinance, because we're gonna follow the state guidelines anyway out of the state local health officer manual.
Okay.
So, basically, like, you know, like, when you go into the town office, there's a list of, you know, like, we just, if you guys wanted to just approve what was discussed at the last thing, we'll just make a fee schedule, a, a fine schedule, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have to have a public hearing on that though?
I know, that's what we.
An ordinance we do.
If we follow the state, we don't.
Follow the state, you don't.
But we're not, if we're not creating an ordinance, we just need to have the board approve fines.
To approve fines, okay, what about that?
We should probably do that, because we need to, uh.
Because he had the suggested fines.
Fifty-one, fifty, three hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we go with, uh, Rich's suggested fines, outlined in the last set of minutes.
Yep.
Second, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And that was, um, so I know what the fines, what I know is every twenty days, right?
Every twenty days, yep.
Okay.
And it's not per day.
No.
Right, thank you. Okay, um, all right, new business, Terry White with the Pittsburgh Village Farm Update.
Just wanted to give you folks an update, like, most of you I spoke to, gosh, I don't know what it was, eight months ago, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of gave you the presentation, some of you are new, so, I'm, I'm, uh, on the board of the farm and chair of the building committee, and I just wanted to give you copies of our latest flyer on Tuesdays. We've got a lot of activities this summer, the biggest, uh, series being these Tuesday concerts. We had our first one last night, about a hundred people there, it was really great event, a little hot, but it was. And it's every Tuesday for the next eight weeks, to, we call it Tuesdays.
Tuesdays.
At six PM over there, it's free, donations are welcome, but it's a free event.
Still got the food trucks?
What's that?
There's still food there?
Yep, they have food trucks each one, yep. And, uh. And we have, uh, we're looking at a Jeep event on August tenth, it's in the early planning stages with G-Stone and really is and our, our local auto folks here, hoping that can come together and we all have touch a truck in September again. There's a few paramount activities that will be, they'll be kind of running, but we'll be supporting on the paramount roster if you're interested. Um, I'm, I'm more from the building management, project management background. As I go into retirement, my big volunteer activity is helping the farm as a board member and they're a chair. I try to get this project that's envisioned here by our architect, uh, right now, we, we are working on construction drawings and we're going to, well, we zoning permit, I was, last time I was here was a month ago with your zoning board and they unanimously approved, and I'm expecting to, I think they had thirty-day waiting period or public period, comment period, and I'm expecting that permit any day, hopefully, I don't think there was any public issues with it. Uh, we have water, wastewater permit, we just received from the state the wastewater permit, and we're expecting our stormwater permit soon. And then we'll be applying for Act Two-Fifty, um, later in the summer, probably, early fall. So, we're permitting is well underway, um, for folks who aren't familiar with the project, this is the, the rendering where we're building a small addition off the back, uh, and we're rebuilding porches and mostly new windows, um, sprucing up the exterior. On the site plan, you're probably familiar now with the loop that goes through, through the site. Driveway comes in right by the farmhouse and loops around, um, and we have a pavilion down in the back now where we're holding our Tuesday concerts, we built about a year ago. And what we'll do is, we won't allow the, the drive-through anymore, they'll just be handicap access parking and, and, uh, access from the Elm Street side, and then most of the traffic will come in this, this lower driveway side and there'll be parking out back, and that'll be the main entry at the level for the community center and the bottom level. And up a few steps into the childcare center in the middle level, and two apartments on the top level. Looking at the floor plans, you come in on that bottom level into the community center with an assembly room for events that will hold about forty-five people, if the seating jumps forty-five, it'd be permitted for forty-five, with a kitchen to support activities and an ADA restroom and a second restroom and an administrator's office. The old basement in back will, will have a new mechanical room and the restroom may unfinished. On the, the main middle level that the main access is off of Elm Street is the childcare center. Uh, we're, we're talking with one prospect now, we hope to have a, a memorandum of understanding of the childcare operator soon, so that we can, um, I think that's a critical part for our getting financing to have children, we're gonna have income and this will be a source of income to offset expenses. There'll be preschool, ten preschool children, uh, eight toddlers and eight infants that will accommodate a total of twenty-six in childcare. And a staff, depending who would operate it, I think it's in the seventy, uh, full-time equivalent jobs. Um, and also in the front corner of that is, um, on that front corner of Elm Street and southeast corner, we have a cafe space, uh, we haven't found somebody for that yet, um, I know cafe, if, if for some reason a cafe doesn't work, it could be an office space, it could be any type of tenant, but there's a, a five hundred square feet out front there that, as it's laid out here, it could accommodate sixteen or so folks seating in a cafe, which we think would be really nice for the center of town. And then there's two, two bedroom affordable apartments on the top level. One in the back on the west end and one out facing Elm Street, um, each one's twelve to thirteen hundred square feet. Also a source of income to offset expense, I think the community center will be the biggest expense, but we think it's important to be able to add various community activities, including the library, it's partnering with us on a lot of things. So, we're moving towards permitting, we, we, we have grants, um, and funding. Total construction cost is about three million, the total project cost with all the architects and permitting costs projected to be about three point six. Uh, we have a little over three million right now, and committed grants and personal donations that have been made, so we're optimistic over the next six, nine months, we can bring in the balance we need and be a huge, I think a huge addition to our town center here.
What are the plans with the barn?
Nothing right now. They said they'd love to have a, a large assembly area there, but we don't seem to have a large assembly area in town anywhere, but there've been lots of ideas, so, my thought is some kind of a, even though you couldn't get a regulation basketball, it could maybe be a combination of, of a gym-type space and an assembly space. It's, um, one step at a time, I guess. Grants, a lot of the grant folks with historic preservation requirements in order to give us grants, they're, they're tying tighter strings to assuring that we, we do restore and keep the barn, so.
Yeah.
It's, uh, I think it's gonna be pretty definite.
The whole barn, because isn't it two, there are two ages on that barn, right?
There's two old, older additions going west.
Okay.
Which are even, I should say newer additions, the oldest part is the old timber frame part on the east side.
Yeah.
And, you know, my view is that's the, the best structure and the, the part that we mostly want to preserve.
Right.
Some folks feel that we ought to tear out some of the old.
Recording in progress.
Old cheaper stick frame parts in the back, but, uh, I don't know if they.
I know, it's cool.
Historic preservation folks will allow us, when we get through that, we'll get there and prove a story.
Yeah, I know.
Look, when I sold that to Baird, that last addition was built out of repurposed lumber, wasn't it? Some of it had been through fire.
Oh, really?
A lot of those additions were put on very quickly, and they were the quality of the middle of the barn.
Very frugal-y.
Yeah, yeah. I have a car door in one of mine for a window.
Yeah, I know, hey?
Well, don't, yeah.
We're gonna be going out soon with a request for proposals for a construction manager to join our team to help with direction with estimating and, uh, helping finalize, make sure the design is finalized and lead a budget. Hope to have them on, on board by August to, to help finish design and, and bid it out next winter. That's where we're at, any, any questions?
Taking it further than I thought you were gonna make it.
I know, it's going great.
Are you gonna have a concentration on local tradesmen to do the work? I would hope.
Well, I can tell you engineers.
I'd hate to see someone from Burlington coming down to.
So far, it's been engineers, um, and architects, the architect is from Burlington, but Otter Creek Engineering is our civil. Uh, Engineering Services of Vermont from Rutland is mechanical electrical engineer. Um, so, we're trying to keep it as local as we can. We've called around, uh, to contractors to see about interest in submitting a CEM proposal and I'm pretty sure several locally, uh, VMS, um, Russell and Neil and Breen have all expressed an interest in submitting a CEM proposal, so. It's a, it's a difficult, it's, it's too big for your house builder, but I think each of those I just mentioned would be perfect if they, if they were to win the RFP.
Yeah.
And then it's a, because it's construction manager, it's open book bidding to subs next winter and certainly will participate in the site contractors, we recommend you invite all of these guys who are local and so forth.
Terry, some of this is, is it some federal money in this one too, right?
Oh, yeah.
Because you've got Northern Borders or something, was that the one?
We have Northern Borders, we have National Park Service.
So, there's a lot of guidelines for contractors, right, you've got fellow Davis Bacon and all that wonderful stuff, right?
It is Davis Bacon Wage Race and.
Yeah, that's a lot.
One big unknown is Buy America, Build America.
Yep.
It's, uh, it's new to everybody and we're not sure, for instance, you know, you use it air-source heat pump, well, what's an American-made one, they're all Japanese, when I know, so, we have that.
There is one.
We have that unknown territory across still, but everybody does, it just come out, it's a requirement.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Oh, what about the, um, concerts over the, down over the hill? Is there anything gonna happen there? Yeah, when I was on the CBA, they got permits for using seating on the side of the grassing knoll and I think it was, uh, Vermont Symphony, wasn't it?
It was right up on top of the knoll, yeah, we, um, for larger events, we do them up on top of that knoll.
Up on top?
Yeah.
Because the permit that we approved back then, they were gonna be down in the lower part of the field, and the seating was gonna be on the hill, did that?
I think it was amended at another meeting.
Good, because I don't know how they were gonna set up down there.
Because I remember they came a couple of times.
Oh.
They came a couple of times, damn it, I think it was amended.
First, they were gonna try stage, yeah, but.
Yeah.
Well, I've been involved maybe two and a half years, but I haven't heard.
Before that, Terry, yeah.
Well, that was quite a while ago.
Well, three years.
But it is really nice up on the, you know, up on the hill to go to shows up there.
Catch on to what they were trying to do, but.
So, we encourage you to participate this summer and invite your friends and families and.
I would have been there yesterday, it was too hot.
I said to my wife, if I weren't on the board, I probably wouldn't be there.
Well, thank you, Terry, good luck with the permits. Hopefully that all comes together smoothly and keeps, keeps rolling.
Great news on your funding, too.
Yeah, absolutely, I know. All right, thank you. All right, well, updated open meeting laws, we kinda already went.
I've done that already.
Yeah, we already, do you, do you have anything else you wanna, no, yeah. Um, all right, audit contract.
So, this is the contract letter for the audit for this year. Um, they did send us a letter earlier on to saying that they have, they recognized that they were not timely with a lot of towns because they took on so many clients this year, um, so, well, at least they recognized it, you know, that's, that's kind of a big thing.
That is good.
And, uh, so, Ann has already started working with Pat to, um, on this checklist that's already in the back, so, you know, we want to get a jump on it too, because sometimes it's, you know, the, the time that, you know, we need to be timely on the site too to get information, so. Um, yeah, this, if you guys so choose.
Hey, have a good night.
Um, this would need a motion and, um, the board chair signature as well as mine.
I think they did a good job, other than the timely part, which they've, you know.
They, you know, they've been great after too, it's like Miranda has been great with talking with Ann and Pat, and then Helen and Pat and I have gone over the management letter a lot and, you know, we addressed the issues, so.
Yep.
I think looking at it as this is something that we need to use as a helpful tool and not sort of as a disciplinary tool went a lot farther that, you know, that's what it's there for. Um, so, I, I, I'm getting the general consensus that, you know, that this is, um, it turned into a better situation.
Yeah, okay.
So.
I will make a motion to accept RHR Smith and Company's audit contract for fiscal year twenty-four.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
So, next year, just don't be surprised if we have to do a single audit because of the, the sewer, because it's over five hundred thousand dollars, so, there might be a single audit, and that's, it's just an addition to this, but.
I see, okay.
Once a project goes over that, that needs to happen, so.
Okay. All right, um, okay.
And, and Ann put the budget in, um, we're look, we're in good shape, we're looking really good for the year end. This one is from the fourteenth, but we've been looking at it daily, so we're gonna be in really good shape the end of the year. Um, which hopefully we can have that discussion about what we want to do with, you know, the remaining funds we need for sewer. But, yeah, it's, um, our revenues were up, which was really interesting.
I know, I was going through some of that, I was actually like, some things that I feel like were, I can't, now I don't know, but.
So.
Like zero was in the budget, but we actually brought in.
Yep.
Five thousand bucks or something, you know, I don't know.
So, that was kind of cool to see it, because I, I don't think I've ever seen revenues increase in a municipal, but, you know, so, just things are, you know, we tightened things up a bit too, so.
Good.
Um. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, all right, so. Reappraisal order. So, we're being forced to reap, reapprai, do a townwide reappraisal, yeah, well, we not, we were really due for one anyways, really.
Yep, so.
I think we got money for it too. Right?
We should have.
Yeah, I'll tell you in a minute if we look at this.
Right, I forgot, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They give us, you know, there should be money.
I totally forgot about that.
So, yep.
Supposed to have.
Should be.
Yep. Yep, so...
And honestly, that'll help, at least with tax, school taxes, right, the, the whole CLA thing.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Well, it doesn't change anybody's tax.
No.
Yeah, usually grand, if grand list goes up, tax rate's supposed to go down, but it all equals out in the, basically.
In the end.
That's, that's how it's supposed to work.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Well.
So, well, you know, although I think, you know, with, with the minimal increases that are here and the way that things are run, like, I mean, I, this is like, I was talking to Alicia about this earlier today, like, unfortunately, we're the ones that are subject to having to tighten the belt up more because of the rest of the taxes that we don't control. And it's, it's frustrating that, you know, like, we're the ones that are doing all the work for the community with the roads, and I don't even think of highways and everything, but, you know, it's, what's, what's the portion of ours?
It's like eighty percent is education, so...
Twenty percent of the total tax bill is us, you know, which is pretty...
We do a damn good job in this town with only twenty percent of tax bills, so...
So, you know, it's just frustrating.
Do you want to talk about the other eighty?
Yeah. No, I don't, because I'm frustrated.
We have no control over that, so let's...
I'm frustrated after reading...
Well...
Control of who you vote for.
You're right, you're right, no, I, I stand corrected, there is a chance to correct it the next time people vote.
Well, trouble is, they keep going, and they'll do something before voting.
Cutting the good part of the state.
It's, uh...
I know.
People north from here that need to wake up.
It was frustrating to hear what happened with Act Two Fifty.
That's crazy up there. It's all frustrating.
Yeah, I was really frustrated with that.
It was frustrating to hear people who voted yes on overriding vetos, trying to explain why it was the right choice when clearly, what none of those want should have been.
Well, Alicia and I are going to legislative breakfast.
Yeah, yeah, and Phil Scott will be there, so that'll be interesting.
Well, I've gone to...
I'm sure we'll hear, you know, and it's just, it's just, it's frustrating.
Especially by one of those.
Pass these down to me.
I know.
That has such a huge impact.
Um, well, I don't know if they have really... Either, it's either me or it says legislative body or they're designated, so Alicia can sign it now.
She voted for all those overrides.
I don't think it's debatable at this point.
Anything else on that reappraisal? Um, there's, is it just to, so we know?
You or I've got to sign it, and then Lisa does what she needs to do with it, so...
Okay. Alright, yeah, so, nothing to...
Yep.
Okay. No other action on that, alright, um, so then I guess all we have left is, um, if anybody has any questions on orders?
I'll break this up.
No, that's this one.
Yep. Oh, payroll, you said payroll, I'm sorry, I thought you said, never mind.
I'm not resetting that, it's giving me too many fits.
Tell you, I'm not complaining about the air conditioning in here today.
No, I'm gonna have to see what's going on, because it's been, actually, it was a problem branded too, I know they're doing it, they're starting to do the build-out with the fiber all over the place, so. Um, oh, yeah, that's something we should be getting a schedule on pretty soon, Consolidated called me, because Consolidated's doing a bunch of build-out with fiber, too, so they called me to let, let us know that they'd be in town, and I asked for a schedule and where they start, so once they have it, hopefully we'll see that, and...
Okay, great.
I was wondering, would it, I think it would be worth having one or two of our Oakhead people come and give a update on what's been going on?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because when I left, they were really starting to push that, you know, the build-out over on Fire Hill and everything with...
Yeah, if they're willing to come to a meeting, I think it'd be interesting to hear where, where, where it's at.
Okay, I'll ask them, I think it'd be good to know. Um, Alicia, this is, just, that's the RHR. Um, you want to just sign that reappraisal letter that you have in front of you, and we'll, um, just use that one? There's the minutes. Oh, here, just take this one. Can you give that to her, Tom? Thanks.
Thank you. So, this one's just you and me have to sign this one also?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I know, that's what's gonna be really nice to have. Nineteen thirty.
You have to worry about that one.
Nope. Yes, it, it's just, you might need to...
Worry about that one.
I'm heading, when I leave here, we're having a...
You don't have to worry about that one either.
On tonight, because Elizabeth has orientation tomorrow, so...
You want to pass these back to Alicia or keep them here?
Uh, we could just...
Snudge me.
You can just leave them, I'll grab them.
Thank you. Alright, well, then if there's nothing else, can I, um, I guess, I'm trying to do the proper way now.
Sorry, Dave, I could have brought those to you.
He needs the exercise.
So, do I, can I have, um, a motion to go into executive session in accordance with DSA Three Thirteen A, where premature general public knowledge would clearly place the municipality or person involved at a substantial disadvantage to discuss pending or probable civil litigation or prosecution, to which the public body is or may be a party, uh, to include the town manager.
So moved.
Check it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.